Ringing. And call this meeting to order. The invocation today is going to be given by Reverend Carolyn Jenkins from Little Chapel on the boardroom. Well.
Spirit of wisdom and compassion, we gather today with public interest in mind. We are grateful for the ability to serve New Hanover County, and we thank you for all of those who are able to be here today. May we approach our work with open minds, thoughtful dialogue, and a sincere desire to improve the lives of those we represent for decades to come. Help us to listen to one another in earnest and speak with humility, that we would work together in harmony. Amen.
Amen.
Please face the flag.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Yeah, thank you very much. Thank you very much, Mr. Chair. I'd like to pull, uh, number seven, yes. If we could pull number seven for just a little bit of a, not clarification, just to put a spotlight on it. Um, this is one of my annual favorites. This is the adoption of a resolution to dispose of surplus property according to procedures outlined in North Carolina General Statute, Chapter 168-Article 12. I bring this, ah, hello here. Well, I think everybody up here, and I know you have had an opportunity to go through all the items. For those of you who are not familiar with this item, at least, well, I think twice a year, actually. Am I right, Sarah?
We try to do it twice a year.
Yeah, twice a year. But this one is extraordinary. We give away, excuse me, we take our surplus property and we offer it up to nonprofits first, you know, throughout, you know, the county to come in and take a look at it and, um, receive, you know, these items and, uh, and so, and once the nonprofits have gone through them, they're open to the public. Usually there's a lot of really interesting items, a lot of, uh, office equipment, uh, and sometimes vehicles and, uh, large commercial, uh, lawn mowers, the kind of stuff we use for our Parks Department and our Sheriff's Department, et cetera. This year, though, we happen to be making the transition from our main library to our new library, and thus many of the items in the old library are up for, uh, the taking, I guess is the right way to put it, and certainly for, uh, taking a look at the, um, for the nonprofits. Key to this is if you serve on the board of a nonprofit, or if you are a member of that, and you need, you know, basic office material, or in this case, a Crown Victoria, or a Dodge Charger, uh, or a van, you might want to pay attention and take a look. Also, we have John Deere mowers, uh, Trek mountain bikes, a ping pong table is also available, fitness equipment, cargo trailers. All of this is available, uh, thanks to the surplus property, you know, measure that we're looking at here from the, from the county. Also, the, uh, ton of shelving, wood tables, library wood tables, oak chairs. So again, I know, so all these kinds of things you don't think about until you really need them. This could be a windfall worth literally thousands of dollars. So please pay attention. Sarah, could you kind of lead us through that, some of the details of how you could possibly get these items?
Yes, good morning, Commissioner. So, um, the items will be available tomorrow morning, given your approval today. That first week will be for nonprofit organizations to have the opportunity to view the items, inspect the items, and make offers to us. After that, we will advertise and sell the remaining material on GovDeals.
Mm-hmm. So is it, is it an auction-type?
Correct, correct. Not for the nonprofits. For the nonprofits, it's really first come, first served. If they make an offer to us and we deem it to be reasonable, then we will sell those items to the nonprofits. But then, once it is on the auction site, yes, it's, it's a site that operates much like an eBay.
And, and again, the vehicles that are involved here, because the sheriffs are going through a replacement program of their vehicles, I think I counted thirty, maybe forty, different cars and vans and cargo.
I have a few.
Excuse me?
I have a few extra models.
Yeah, oh, of course, they're all used vehicles, yes. That's right. But, uh, a tremendous opportunity for our community, you know, to participate in this. So, how would they reach out to do this, Sarah?
So they can reach out, again, um, given approval today, starting tomorrow, by contacting, um, our office, Facilities Management, specifically asking for Brian or anybody really regarding surplus, and we'll get them to the right person.
So the word surplus?
That'll do it.
And Brian?
And we'll also have advertisements out on all the socials and on our website.
And again, just for those who are listening to it, a phone number or email address?
Yeah, so our, um, seven nine eight forty four thirteen.
Seven nine eight four four one three.
Perfect.
And the email?
Um, do you want me to read it? We do have it posted in the advertisement. It's B. Kohlenberg, K-O-H-L-E-N-B-E-R-G, at N-H-C-G-O-V dot com, but probably better just to grab that online.
Great. And we can reach that through the county website, right?
Yes, correct.
Right, which is?
N-H-C-G-O-V dot com.
Operator's standing by. Great, Sarah, is anything more you want to add to that?
That is all. We look forward to having lots of bidders.
Yeah, good. Thank you very much. Thank you, Mr. Chair.
Yes, sir.
That's all I had.
Thank you, um, for that discussion, Commissioners Apple. With that, Mr. Chair, I would move the consent agenda.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
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 It's time to meet some folks.
Commissioners, good morning. We're going to start employee recognition this morning. I'm sad to say, with four folks that are retiring from the organization, but collectively here and then in other communities perhaps they may have served, there, there is more than one hundred and twenty years of public service combined between the four people that we're going to recognize. I, I, I don't ever recall so many years of incredible service and institutional knowledge leaving at the same time, at least that we've been able to present. So, this is a special moment when more than a hundred and twenty years of public service leadership is exiting the organization and service to our community, and these are, again, some of the finest folks doing this work anywhere in the country. And so this morning, first, I'd like to recognize thirty-one years of total service, fifteen years of service to New Hanover County. I'm going to ask Tara Duckworth, our Parks and Gardens Director, to come forward and let me read about her fifteen years of service to us, but consider thirty-one to our community in that she was with the city of Wilmington before that. Tara, good morning. I didn't think this day would ever actually come, so. Tara, I, she probably doesn't want me to tell you all this, but, but we did get her to delay her retirement by more than six months last year, and so we're thankful for her willingness to stay with us a little bit longer than her and her husband probably had expected or bargained for. Tara, thank you, and let me read about your service, if I may. Tara Duckworth is retiring after fifteen years of dedicated service with New Hanover County, all of those with the Parks and Gardens Department, and the majority of those as our director. Tara joined the county in two thousand and ten as Parks Manager and was promoted to Director in two thousand and twelve, leading with vision, passion, and a deep commitment to public service. Over her thirty-one, thirty-one-year career in local government, including earlier roles with the city of Wilmington, she's transformed Parks and Gardens into spaces that enrich the community and improve quality of life for thousands of residents and visitors. Her leadership brought to life signature projects such as the Ogden Skate Park, Hanover Pines and Nature Park, Echo Farms Park, and Smith Creek Park, while also expanding multi-use trails, sports fields, and open spaces. She guided both the Air League Gardens Foundation and the Parks Conservancy to fiscal strength and lasting impact. This is special. Tara also played a vital role in emergency response, directing the logistics team during major hurricanes, Hurricane Florence in particular, in deploying with the A Team to assist recovery efforts in western North Carolina following Hurricane, Hurricane Helene last year. She's been recognized as UNCW's Parks and Recreation Management Distinguished Alumnus, is a graduate of the Public Executive Leadership Academy through the UNC School of Government, and received the Local Government Credit Union's Excellence in Innovation Award for her work on the Ogden Skate Park. Under her leadership, the department earned numerous national and county honors and was named the two thousand and twenty-four Outstanding Parks and Recreation Department in North Carolina by the United States Tennis Association. Tara's legacy is one of innovation, collaboration, and community impact, shaping nearly twenty-eight hundred acres of parks, gardens, and school properties all across New Hanover County. Again, you cannot replace thirty-one years of excellence, fifteen years of extra dedication and investment in our community. Tara, I hate that you're retiring, but it's something you've earned. We wish you well. Thank you for everything that you've done to make New Hanover County truly the best place in North Carolina. It's, it's well deserved, well earned. Congratulations. Thank you. And Commissioners, Tara would like to have some of the folks that are with her today come forward for the picture. So if you're here in honor of Tara, like all y'all are, please come forward. Tara, again, congratulations, and thank you for everything that you've done. We're going to recognize someone this morning who is retiring from us after fifteen years of service, but in total, to the state, thirty-five years of public service. And with that, I'd like to ask Margaret Burns to come forward, give me the honor to read about thirty-five years of service, fifteen years in New Hanover County. Congratulations, and thank you. Margaret Burns is retiring after fifteen years, thirty-five total, of dedicated service with New Hanover County, all of those within the Department of Social Services. Margaret began her career as a Human Services caseworker, and through her commitment to serving families, was promoted to Human Services Caseworker Supervisor in Long-Term Care. Known for her compassion and dedication, she's been a steady source of encouragement to her team and the community members she served. Colleagues describe Margaret as a professional who embodies care and consistency, ensuring every client interaction reflects the highest standard of service. Her work has strengthened families and advanced the mission of Health and Human Services to support program participants with dignity and respect. Throughout her career, Margaret has lived out New Hanover County's shared values. She's received stellar awards for professionalism, innovation, stewardship, and accountability, and was recognized for going above and beyond by assisting two North Carolina counties in need of support. Her leadership has guided colleagues and ensured that economic services programs reach those most in need with efficiency and compassion. You can't replace that kind of leadership, that kind of love, that kind of investment. We're not going to try, but Margaret, thank you for thirty-five years of service, fifteen years to New Hanover County. What a wonderful career, what a wonderful, uh, retirement. Thank you, congratulations. So very happy. Margaret, again, thank you. Congratulations. So the next person we're going to recognize this morning, retiring with twenty-seven years of service, but all of that in New Hanover County, is Doug Perry, the New Hanover County Sheriff's Office. Doug, would you come forward and give me the honor to read about your service? Doug Perry is retiring after twenty-seven years of distinguished service with the New Hanover County Sheriff's Office. Doug began his career with the Sheriff's Office in nineteen ninety-eight and faithfully served as a deputy and detective before being promoted to sergeant in two thousand and eighteen. He achieved the rank of lieutenant in two thousand twenty-three, concluding his career as watch commander over the Civil Division, leading with integrity, discipline, and an unwavering commitment to public safety. In addition to his career with the Sheriff's Office, Doug proudly served his country as a U.S. Army veteran. Thank you, sir, for that service. Throughout his service, he guided colleagues with fairness, accountability, and respect, leaving a lasting mark on the Sheriff's Office family. His dedication has been recognized with stellar awards for professionalism and innovation, reflecting the very best of New Hanover County's shared values. Doug's years of service have strengthened trust and safety across our community, we're all safer for his commitment of twenty-five years to the New Hanover County Sheriff's Office. Doug Perry, twenty-seven years, well earned, well deserved. Thank you for everything. Congratulations, it's well earned. Doug, congratulations. Thank you for everything. So Commissioners, we have another person to recognize this morning. I mentioned it, I'm, I'm sorry to see four outstanding people retire from our organization, but with that, I'd like to recognize Georgia Morris, who's retiring after thirty-three years of service. Georgia, would you come forward and let me read about your distinguished? Georgia Morris is retiring after thirty years, thirty-three years of outstanding service with the New Hanover County Department of Social Services. Georgia began her career in nineteen ninety-two, where she served as social worker in foster care and services intake units, before transitioning to family support specialist in two thousand and twenty-one. Throughout her career, she has been a strong advocate for children and families, always leading with compassion and integrity. She embodies the very best of human services, demonstrating perseverance, empathy, and professionalism in every case for which she was responsible, and for improving countless lives in the process. Georgia's dedication has been recognized with multiple stellar awards for professionalism, integrity, accountability, stewardship, and innovation, honors that reflect her consistent commitment to going above and beyond to ensure families receive not only services, but also dignity and respect. I've had the chance to say that twice today about two of our folks retiring from social services. Her colleagues praise her integrity and unwavering commitment to New Hanover County's shared values. Georgia's legacy is one of compassion, service, and impact that will continue to aspire, inspire others in the years to come. Again, you, you cannot replace thirty-three years of passion and investment like that, and we're not going to try. We just hope that we can bring in new people that have the same commitment to public service that Georgia Morris gave to our community for thirty-three years. Georgia, congratulations. Thank you, it's well earned. Congratulations. Georgia, congratulations again. Thank you for thirty-three years of service. Commissioners, again, I, I don't know how you even come close to replacing that. I say it when we lose people, we're not going to try, we just hope to find people that good, but there's a hundred and twenty-plus years of public service that has, um, chosen to take their retirement, which they've earned, and maybe invest in themselves in a new and different way. So I think they deserve another round of applause. Congratulations, and thank you to all of you for what you've done to make our community safe, healthy, and secure. So with that, we're going to recognize significant milestones, um, actually one more significant than anything that we've seen today in terms of service, but we'll begin this morning, we have one person that's been with us for five years, and when I call your name, if you would please, come forward, I'd like to be the first to shake your hand, thank you for being on the team, and then invite you to meet with the board. And so our five-year service recognition this morning from the Department of Social Service, Services is Gwendolyn Brown. Gwendolyn, thank you for what you do, and thank you for being on this team. Commissioners, we're going to move forward and, and recognize someone who's got a decade of service to our community, and this morning, happy to recognize from the Cape Fear Museum, Heather Yanko. Heather, thank you for being on this team. Congratulations, and we're so excited about your new facility. We're going to recognize someone with fifteen years of service. So now we're starting to get into about a half a career, more or less, with New Hanover County. We have one person this morning in the Senior Resource Center, Rebecca Pierce. Rebecca, congratulations on fifteen years, and thank you for that. We're going to go to twenty years of service, and we've got one person with us this morning from information technology, Stephen Sims. Congratulations, twenty. Got someone this morning that we're going to recognize with twenty-five years of service to New Hanover County in the Department of Social Services, Alice Moore. Alice, congratulations on twenty-five years of service, but more importantly, thank you for all that you do. Commissioners, we have, uh, one additional person to recognize this morning, and, and this is in rare air that, that you can hardly breathe, when you're at that, with forty years of service to New Hanover County, and, and this is not a retirement, this is recognition of forty years of service to New Hanover County, the Department of Social Services, Gloria Bowden. Forty years of service to our commu- Commissioners, that forty years, still coming to work, five years, still kind of knew the team, but committed to the public policy of New Hanover County. Every one of these men and women are, again, the best and the brightest, and they deserve a round of applause, and thank you for what they do. Thank you all so much. So we're going to recognize some, some new folks that have joined the team, and obviously, a lot of you, I hope, are going to be here in five years. I hope all of you are here in five years. Some of you will be here in forty years. I won't be, I'm pretty sure I'll be long gone, but it's always exciting to welcome new folks. You represent, as all of our employees do, the best and the brightest. What separates you from others is that you have a passion and a commitment to public service. You can't be hired into this organization and be successful if you don't ultimately demonstrate that day in, day out. So thank you for joining the team. When I call your name, if you would please stand up, we want to give you a proper welcome to New Hanover County. First, and all of our recognitions this morning, new hires are in the New Hanover County Fire Rescue. First, Omar Perez. Omar, congratulations, thank you for joining New Hanover County Fire. Samantha Swain. Samantha, thank you for joining the team. Frederick Falcone. Frederick, thank you for joining New Hanover County. Trey Mintz. Trey, welcome, thank you for coming to work with us. And Christopher Kiesler. Christopher, thank you, sir, for joining New Hanover County. Commissioners, new folks to join New Hanover County Fire Rescue, thank you for the opportunity to recognize all of our outstanding public servants this morning. Thank you.
Next is a recognition by the North Carolina Association of County Commissioners, NCACC, for the two thousand twenty-five Civic Excellence and Innovation Awards. commitment, and that's what makes these programs work. These awards belong to you. This time, I'd like to invite staff forward for a photo.
Next is Consideration of Early Childhood Education Month, Smart Start of New Hanover County proclamation written by Ms. Walker.
It's me again, y'all. I'm going to go ahead and read this proclamation, then we're going to have folks up for a photo and recognition. So this is the Early Childhood Education Month Smart Start of New Hanover County proclamation. Whereas Smart Start of New Hanover County has worked for over 30 years to ensure that all young children benefit from resources and opportunities they need to enter school healthy and prepared for success. And whereas high-quality birth-to-five strategies and programs focusing on early education, health, and well-being, and family support create stronger K-12 and post-secondary outcomes for students and a more skilled workforce for employers. And whereas Smart Start Coordinated Services raises awareness and creates collective impact across the county for children and families, generating systemic changes to ensure the comprehensive well-being of our youngest citizens. And whereas addressing adverse childhood experiences, or ACEs, and fostering childhood resiliency are crucial for developing healthy, adaptive, and successful individuals, and Smart Start plays a key role in these efforts. And whereas Smart Start recognizes and supports early childhood teachers and providers as the essential workforce behind the workforce, honoring the important role they play in helping children and families thrive and in strengthening New Hanover County's economy. And whereas Smart Start provides critical infrastructure for the early childhood system through collaboration and partnerships with local, state, and federal agencies and nonprofits, bridging service gaps and providing needed administration to programs. And whereas investing in high-quality, early childhood initiatives like Smart Start yields substantial long-term benefits for children, families, and society through increased educational attainment, higher earnings, reduced crime, and improved health outcomes. Now therefore be it proclaimed by the New Hanover County Board of Commissioners that September 2025 shall be recognized as Early Childhood Education Month with Smart Start of New Hanover County in New Hanover County, and that all citizens are encouraged to participate in its observance throughout the month, adopted this 15th day of September 2025 by William E. Rievenbark, Chair.
Ms. Gallin?
Jane, do you want to get up and say something? Or this is just Jane Morrow, Smart Start of Hanover County.
Thank you guys so much. We really appreciate the recognition and the understanding. And in my 11 years here in New Hanover County, I have been honored to work with you all. The amount of effort that this county has put into early childhood education should be a model for the rest of the state. Investment in early childhood helps the children, of course, but it also, as the proclamation noted, it's so important for families that they're able to go to work and feel confident and productive when they're working because they have a safe place for their children to be. I think all of the things that we've heard this morning, from the recognition of 911 and mental health services to social services, all of the elements of the county parks and rec, they all affect our families. When children have safe places to play, when they know that, when they're needing other kinds of services, they have a place to go, makes for the kind of community that we want to live in. And at Smart Start of New Hanover County, we're really proud to be able to work with those first few years, during the first five years of life, 90% of brain gets developed, and we are really proud to be part of that early trajectory and for all of the work that everybody else in the county does to make sure that our citizens are healthy, safe, and have a lovely place to live. Thank you so much.
Jane?
Thank you. I second Commissioner Walker's motion to adopt the proclamation.
All in favor?
Aye.
Mr. Chair, can I just say one thing before we take our picture? I've worked with Jane on the issue, and Commissioners Apple as well, when it comes to early childhood education, and we all know it's a no-brainer. It's a well-deserved investment in our community, in our children, and definitely the workforce as well, but, you know, it starts very, very young, and I echo what Jane said about brain development. I mean, we've got to start early with our kids, so I appreciate all the work that y'all do at Smart Start. Can you go up for a picture? Yeah.
I'd like to recognize Mr. Toro.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Mr. Toro, I'll read the proclamation and ask for some remarks on your part.
Thank you. Good morning.
New Hanover County Board of Commissioners Hispanic Heritage Month proclamation. Whereas National Hispanic Heritage Month is observed annually from September 15 through October 15 to celebrate the histories, cultures, and contributions of Hispanic, Latina, Latinx, and Latin American communities in the United States. And whereas in New Hanover County, the Hispanic and Latino community enriches local culture and economy through entrepreneurship, innovation, artistry, education, and civic engagement. And whereas Hispanics and Latinos comprise approximately 7.66% of New Hanover County's population, a growing and vibrant demographic that contributes to the strength and vitality of the region. And whereas New Hanover County celebrates the heritage, resilience, and contributions of its Hispanic residents and recognizes the importance of fostering community engagement, cultural understanding, and opportunity for all. And now therefore, the New Hanover County Board of Commissioners does hereby proclaim September 15 through October 15, 2025, as Hispanic Heritage Month in New Hanover County, and encourages all residents and organizations to join in in observing this month through educational programs, cultural events, civic activities, and other meaningful opportunities that highlight the heritage and contributions of Hispanic and Latino communities, adopted this 15th day of September 2025 by William E. Rievenbark, Chair. The floor is yours.
Thank you. Good morning. One of the S. On behalf of the New Hanover Hispanic-Latin Commission, we are deeply honored to accept this proclamation in recognition of the Hispanic and Latino community here in New Hanover County. This recognition is more than just symbolic. It affirms the vibrant contributions and the enduring presence of our community, a presence that continues to grow, strengthen, and shape the very fabric of this county. Hispanic Heritage Month is an important time for all of us to celebrate our stories, our heritage, and the richness of our culture. It is a time to reflect on the immense contributions we've made. It is also an opportunity to look ahead. We must inspire future generations to continue building on shared history we've created with pride, purpose, and unwavering belief in the possibilities before us. The pursuit of the American dream has always been at the heart of our community, and that journey is far from over. Together, we can contribute to build bridges, create new opportunities, and contribute meaningfully to the ongoing progress of this county. As we stand here today, we do so in the shadow of those who have paved the way for us. We celebrate Roberto Clemente, whose excellence on the baseball field inspired millions, while his humanitarian work off the field uplifted communities around the world. We honor Gabriel Garcia Marquez, whose literary masterpiece, like 100 Years of Solitude, transformed global literature, provided a voice for Latin America, and a deeper understanding of our shared humanity. We also honor Dr. Helen Rodriguez, a pioneer physician, whose tireless work was underserved communities' improved healthcare access for so many, and whose legacy continues to inspire others in the fight for health equality. We must remember the legacy of Cesar Chavez, whose leadership in the fight for farmworkers' rights and his commitment to nonviolent resistance have made a lasting impact on social justice movements that continue to guide us today. And in the world of music, we celebrate Gloria Estefan, whose groundbreaking songs brought Latin rhythm to the global stage and opened doors for countless artists like Bad Bunny, whose bold sound and social message have made Latin culture a driving force in today's music and beyond. Yet, it is not just the public figures who shape our community. The Hispanic and Latino community is filled with everyday heroes, soldiers, doctors, leaders, teachers, farmworkers, each of whom strengthened the foundation of this country. We honor the sacrifices and services of our heroes, both now and unknown, who worked tirelessly to create a better future for us all. I would like to take a moment to thank the New Hanover County Commissioners and the community at large for this powerful recognition. Your support uplifts us, reminding us of the value we bring to this shared space and reinforcing our collective commitment to the growth and well-being of this country. As we move forward, let us continue working together across all cultures, background, and experiences to make New Hanover County a place where everyone is embraced and celebrated for their unique contribution. Together, we can build a future where all are seen, valued, and heard. Gracias.
Thank you, sir.
Mr. Chair, I'd like to second Commissioner's Apple's proclamation.
All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Michelle, will you come forward?
Next is Consideration of Constitution Week proclamation.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Go ahead and read the proclamation, and as we did previously, ask for some comments. I believe Ms. Ashcraft is here to provide some comments. Thank you, ma'am. New Hanover County Board of Commissioners Constitution Week 2025 proclamation. Whereas September 17, 2025 marks the 238th anniversary of the drafting of the Constitution of the United States of America by the Constitutional Convention. And whereas it is fitting and proper to officially recognize this magnificent document and the anniversary of its creation. And whereas it is fitting and proper to officially recognize the patriotic celebrations which will commemorate the occasion. And whereas public law 915 guarantees the issuing of a proclamation each year by the President of the United States of America designating September 17 through the 23 as Constitution Week. Now therefore be it proclaimed by the New Hanover County Board of Commissioners that September 17 through the 23, 2025 be recognized as Constitution Week in New Hanover County, and that citizens are asked to reaffirm the ideals the framers of the Constitution had in 1787, adopted this the 15th day of September 2025, William E. Rievenbark, Chair.
Chairman Rievenbark and Commissioners, thank you for having me here today. The Constitution was signed on September 17, 1787, and therefore every year we celebrate the signing of the Constitution because it is the essential document of our democracy. This year, the Stamp Defiance Chapter, Daughters of the American Revolution, will have a celebration at the Bergman Wright House on Wednesday of this week. It's right down the street, so I encourage you to join us at 3:00 PM, and we will conclude at 4:00 PM with the ringing of the bells, as they did in 1787. Citizens rang the bells. So we're going to ring some bells, too, and enjoy the signing of the Constitution. Thank you very much for having me here today and for signing this proclamation.
You're welcome.
Mr. Chair, before we go to the vote, I just also want to note that there was a wonderful film called The American Constitution, directed and produced and written by David Garrigus, which was premiered here in New Hanover County. And I encourage everybody who's listening to this to please look it up. It will be available on PBS next year, but it was all shot here and used up to 40 local actors in it. I've seen it, and it is wonderful, and it will teach you a lot about the American Constitution.
Yes.
Lynn, again, thank you for everything that you do to bring items like this to the commission. I will be there on Wednesday. I'll see you there on Wednesday. And for clarity, I have moved this proclamation seeking a second.
Second.
All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
You've got two seconds.
Okay, next. Next is committee appointments.
Mr. Chair, I'd like, before we jump into the committee appointments, excuse me, on the first one, yeah, I'm sorry.
I said I was just getting ready to announce what we're doing.
Yeah, okay. I just, I wanted to make a comment before we jumped into the actual appointments of this first one.
This first committee appointment is New Hanover County Community Endowment.
I nominate Shannon Winslow and Justin Burgess.
Mr. Chair, before we go to the vote on that, I know there's been considerable discussion within this commission, but also throughout our entire community. The community endowment has gone through a lot of transformative changes, especially over the last, well, over four years that it's been in existence, but certainly over the last several months. The appointments that the county makes, which are five appointments, Novant Hospital makes six appointments, and then there are two appointments that are made internally from the endowment.
which was premiered here in New Hanover County. And I encourage everybody who's listening to this to please look it up. It will be available on PBS next year, but it was all shot here and used up to forty local actors in it. I've seen it, and it is wonderful, and it will teach you a lot about the American Constitution.
Yes.
Lynn, again, thank you for everything that you do to bring items like this to the Commission. I will be there on Wednesday. I'll see you there on Wednesday. And for clarity, I have moved this proclamation seeking a second.
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 All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Wonderful. You've got two seconds.
Next is committee appointments.
First. Mr. Chair, I'd like, before we jump into the committee appointments, excuse me, on the first one, yeah, I'm sorry.
I said, I was just getting ready to announce what we're doing.
Yeah, okay. I just, I wanted to make a comment before we jumped into the actual appointments of this first one.
This first committee appointment is New Hanover County Community Endowment.
I nominate Shannon Winslow and Justin Burgess.
Mr. Chair, before we go to the vote on that, I know there's been considerable discussion within this Commission, but also throughout our entire community. The community endowment has gone through a lot of transformative changes, especially over the last, well, over four years that it's been in existence, but certainly over the last several months. The appointments that the county makes, which are five appointments, Novant Hospital makes six appointments, and then there are two appointments that are made internally from the endowment. But I just want to point out that we've had communication with a number of the people who have asked for, to be appointed or reappointed. And during this period of transition, this board was addressed by the new CEO, Sophie Dejeanay, and the current Chair of the Endowment, Shannon Winslow. And at the time they were here, less than a month ago, they asked that the appointments that were coming up, which we're doing right now, they asked for stability and experience in our appointments during this time of transition from one CEO to another. I think it's really important that we pay attention to what the endowment is asking for and to seek that out. Key among this is Mr. Broadhurst, Spence Broadhurst, who is the former Chair of the Endowment, has asked for a reappointment along with the current Chair, Shannon Winslow. I believe both of them represent the stability and experience and certainty that are on that list of applicants that we have been given to select from. And in his application, Mr. Broadhurst notes the very things that have helped, you know, to bring the... Excuse me, just a second. To help bring the endowment into being. He notes in his application, "I believe my experience and knowledge of the startup process as well as the evolution today are critical assets for the endowment, ensuring that the endowment continues to adhere to the letter and spirit of the founding documents, including the asset purchase agreement and the letter of agreement with the North Carolina Department of Justice, ensuring that the endowment's strategic plan continues to be consistent with the strategic plan of New Hanover County." I couldn't say it better myself as to the kind of stability and surety that we need on that endowment as we go through this transitional period. So I would just strongly encourage all of my fellow Commissioners, as we move into making the appointments, that we pay attention to what the endowment has asked for. And I strongly support Mr. Spence Broadhurst and Shannon Winslow, although I'll defer, Commissioner Scalise, I did not mean to interrupt you, but I wanted to make that comment. I know that we often do these appointments. Sometimes they seem abrupt to the community, but some of the committees that we appoint to, I believe, rise to the level of an open discussion so that we can talk about what it is and the priorities that we have in the appointments. Thank you, Mr. Chair, for your patience.
Commissioner Zappel, I take it that you totally ignored the conversation I had with you on Thursday after our agenda review, and let me finish. So I take it, then, that you agree that it's okay for a Commissioner to be bullied and intimidated for their vote. I discussed this with you in private, and I told you we need to keep it in private. And I can only take by your comments that you condoned the behavior.
Certainly was not a part of any of that behavior, and I'm sorry if that was your interpretation.
I heard what you just said.
Yeah, I, yeah, I just read from the application.
I have been an elected official for twelve years, and I will not be bullied, and I will not be pressured into a vote from anyone. Don't call me, and if you want to vote for me, call me and say, these are my merits. This is what I want. This is what I agree to do for you and for our community. Don't say, if you don't do this, I will run against you. I'm not going to do that. I'm not going to vote, and I'm not going to be pressured, and I'm sorry that that happened, and I'm sorry that anybody would condone that kind of behavior from a Commissioner. You will not get my vote that way, ever.
Mr. Chair, I'd like to add.
Yes, ma'am.
You know, obviously, I've been elected, this will be my fifth year, and, but I'm new to this board, still relatively new to this board, and the ways and the things that are done. And I have sent an email out to my fellow Commissioners this weekend, really kind of asking and hoping we could have conversations out in the public like this, because out of all the committees that we do, this is probably the, one of the most important that we, I mean, you know, we are the guardians, and, you know, we're supposed to, these appointments set the tone and set the, you know, timeline for how our, how our endowment funds are going to be spent. And we are, it's our job to put the right people in place in a transparent way, and sometimes, I'll just be honest with you, I don't feel like that's always done when we come to a committee appointments. I mean, and sure, you know, Legion Stadium Committee, maybe that's a little bit different, or some of our other committees, but this one, this one is super important, because, you know, people trust us to really be thoughtful with this, have dialogue with each other, even out loud, and I don't feel like that's been, that's been done. You know, I'm fortunate to say, I felt like people already said that this was a done deal already, and I'm very upset to hear that, because I feel like there are a lot of good people that applied. Spence definitely included in that, and Shannon I'm very fond of as well. But I just, I don't know if we need to do another process with the endowment board specifically in a different way, where it's more open and transparent, but I don't, you know, these appointments are for three years, and they're so, so important, and, you know, it talks in our, the founding documents of the endowment, which I've only just really, really started diving into, that these appointments are, they should have diversity, and that doesn't mean just diversity in gender or race, it means diversity of thought as well. And, you know, when, when the folks are getting together and they're making decisions for our community, we really need to be very cognizant of how we make these decisions. And it's nothing against, you know, the people that have been nominated by my fellow Commissioner here, but there are a lot of good people that applied, and I just think we should owe it to the community to just have a better discussion, a big, broader discussion, so I don't know.
Commissioner Walker, I read your emails over the weekend, and I didn't respond, but you were not at the meeting on Thursday. Doesn't matter why, you were not there. I had discussion with every other Commissioner up here. You have not called me, you have not had any conversation with me to discuss this.
You could have called me as well, Commissioner Pierce, I'm sorry.
Well, when you were not at the meeting, I just assumed you did not want to discuss the endowment appointments.
That's not an excuse, all right. I'm just saying.
Mr. Chair, just as a matter of procedural formality, we jumped into discussion prior to anyone having the opportunity to make a second, so I did make a second, or make a motion, and I would.
I second.
Request a second. Now, noting that we are in the discussion mode, I'll just offer that I, I would have been inclined to go along with the status quo, but for what Commissioner Pierce shared with me, and I believe Commissioner Pierce, whenever she describes the conversation that she had with that nominee, and it matters to me, and it should matter to everybody, the way that we position ourselves whenever it comes time for a vote, to serve on, yes, one of our most important boards. I'll also offer that, not in a combative way, but Commissioner Zappel, I've seen your comments on the media at WECT and otherwise criticizing the endowment, wondering whether or not the endowment is doing what it's supposed to be doing, should we wind the whole thing down and do something different. This motion that I've made to keep the current Chair, but to replace someone who has been there since the inception, before the endowment was even created, and served as Chair, is an attempt to switch things up a little bit. It's perfectly in line with the comments that you've made previously about your dissatisfaction with some of what the endowment has done. Mr. Burgess is a highly qualified individual, financial planner. I know that you know him through Airly Gardens. He helps to manage the money and has done so rather ably over there. He is a community servant. He is a person of deep and sincere faith. He will do an excellent job on the New Hanover Community Endowment. And I am not here to point fingers, cast blame. I thank Mr. Broadhurst for his service on the endowment, but it is my estimation that it is time to look to somebody else to serve in that position, in part for the reason that Commissioner Pierce has already identified, and I believe her on. Those are my comments. I don't know if anyone else has any other comments, but.
I do.
Yes, ma'am.
Yes, sir, thank you. I, again, believe that, you know, like I said, what I've seen from being here is that sometimes this stuff is already decided before we get here, and I get that, I get, I get politics, you know, I've been in it, like I said, for like six, five, going on six years now. At the same time, I just think this committee especially is the most important, and I think maybe we need to find another method for making appointments at this particular committee that is, it's in the founding documents of the, of the endowment that we do this in the most trustful, transparent way possible, and I don't personally feel that that has been done. So, and I'm not pointing fingers, and I don't want to get in arguments up here about who talked to who when, but I feel like if we're trying to be collaborative, as, we're just five of us, there's, there's some way we can come together in a, in a more transparent way, in a public way, to talk about these committee assignments like this. And so going forward, I don't know, I mean, maybe it doesn't matter, because, you know, obviously I'm in the voting minority on a lot of these votes, and I don't have the discussions, and it's not an excuse. Sometimes we miss meetings. I think that's the first meeting I have missed, but I am available by phone, I'm available by email, and I just think this is too important to just be preordained before we get here. So I just want to just leave that out there, and let's just go ahead and do what we're going to do, I guess.
I just think that it's important to note, and thank you for those comments, but we have an individual obligation, each of us, to be proactive in reaching out to our other Commissioners to advocate for the, and I'm not saying this critically. I know that you said you could have called me, but that is a, that is a two-way street. If something is important to you, you have an obligation as a Commissioner to reach out to your colleagues.
Just like the budget, I understand that. Let's just not keep going, please, sir. Can we just vote? Thank you.
I'm not trying to be combative with you, Commissioner Walker. I'm trying to explain that the process of collaboration requires us reaching out to one another. It also, as Commissioner Pierce, Vice Chair Pierce noted, includes agenda review. We only have two moments to publicly discuss any matter.
Oh, my God.
Agenda review and this moment right now. We are discussing it right now. So to suggest anything less than transparency whenever there is a discussion happening right here, right now, and there was an opportunity for discussion at agenda review, but none was had.
Mrs. Scalise, please stop talking down to me. I understand the words you're saying.
Ma'am, I'm not talking down to you.
I don't think we disagree with each other, but it is a two-way street. You are correct. I'm just saying, I don't need to be lectured.
Commissioner Walker, I, I really am doing everything in my power to speak as calmly and patiently as I can.
Yes, sir. Can we call the vote, please?
I am not.
I'm sorry, we don't need to talk anymore about it. You're not, you're lecturing. I've called for the vote.
Let's do these separately. Do Shannon Winslow first. There are motion, you made a motion on Shannon Winslow.
I'll second Shannon.
All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Justin Burgess.
Second.
Spence Broadhurst.
Vote on Justin Burgess first. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
All opposed?
No.
Cooperative Extension Advisory Council, Carl Hess.
Carl Hess. Second.
All in favor say aye.
Aye.
New Hanover County Health and Human Services Board.
Mr. Chair, I nominate Dr. Shaya for the dentist position.
Okay. Second.
All in favor say aye.
Aye.
All opposed? And last is New Hanover County Juvenile Crime Prevention Council.
Mr. Chair, I'd like to nominate, we have several categories here, two at-large and one business community. In the at-large, I'd like to reappoint Wendy Dale.
Second.
And nominate also Brittany Spell.
I'll second, Commissioner Zappel.
Oh, excuse me, I apologize, sir.
And I would like to, for the business community, nominate Greg Saban.
Second.
All in favor say aye.
Aye.
All opposed? Now, we'd like to wish happy birthday to our clerk.
Happy birthday, Kim.
And number two, Eric Peterson, who runs the whole show here, TV, everything, he's just, he's done five hundred of these meetings, and this is like five hundred.
He's like a Wizard of Oz up here.
I call him the Wizard of Oz. He sits up there in that little window.
It's true.
Thanks, Eric. And next is call to the sign-up sheet speaker, Tom Plaskett.
Good morning, Commissioners, thank you very much for having me. I know I only have three minutes. I have sent, sent a lot of information to all your, the Commissioners in advance, which is well more than three minutes, probably well more than three hours or days. There's a lot of concern that has come up recently when I received my most recent water bill, and it had risen from a hundred and forty dollars a month to two hundred and eighty-five dollars a month. What I, what I found, that, I mean, that just tweaked me to go forward and see what the reasoning behind that is. So I've done a, as you, as you can see, I've done a lot of research into the CFPUA board. I know that Mr. Zappel and Mr. Scalise both sit on the board of CFPUA, and I certainly appreciate that. I think there's a lot of items that need to be broached, that may not be broached, and I'm getting that information from the budget for CFPUA. It's, there's some glossing over of some items, and the one that hits home to me, that was the catalyst for, for all my attention to be played on this, was the irrigation rate increase, which, it never really says it in the budget, but it was a fifty-nine percent increase year to year. I have two meters at my house. I have a good way to measure my irrigation usage, and what happened in the allocation of the cost, and that's my background, is cost accounting, when they allocated that cost, the cost was allocated to people that had meters, said because, and apparently, I don't, I don't see the correlation, but, but there was apparently some connection between having an irrigation meter and being able, being able to measure it to people that actually use more water for irrigation. Because I don't, I don't have two trucks coming to my house, one for irrigation and one for my household use, and all the other people that don't have the meters are also getting this increase, but a small increase just based on water usage.
Sir, your time's up.
Okay.
I'm sorry.
That's okay, and you have the items to read. Thank you.
Mr. Chair.
Yes, sir.
I know it's highly unusual to respond to public comments. I just want to make one short comment back, that I think that your concerns would be much more clearly handled at the CFPUA board meeting, which is also open to the public, and that'll be on October the eighth at nine A. M., and it's at the Government Center. And Mr. Plaskett, I've received all of your information, and I think it's worthy of a discussion, but the forum for that is much better held at that CFPUA meeting. We're not going to get into a back and forth here. If you hang around after the meeting, I'd be more than happy to talk to you.
Commissioners Apple, thank you for addressing that. Could you speak with Commissioners Apple after the meeting, sir? All right, thank you, thank you.
Okay, next is Dr. Barnes, New Hanover County Superintendent Schools.
Good morning. I'll be quick, because the meter's running, and your tickets are pretty expensive. I just want to come and speak as behalf of the school system and say we appreciate and thank you guys for revisiting your decision about fully funding the school nursing program. I know that that was a hard fought and one discussion back and forth. I will tell you that I don't really care about politics and the maneuvering and things like that. I care about kids, and I care about staff, and your movement towards addressing that certainly addresses both of those concerns for me as well. So I appreciate you guys revisiting that decision. So I appreciate you guys revisiting that decision. The nurses, thank you, and so does our staff.
Dr. Morgan had anything to say? Chris?
I just want to say that we had the opportunity yesterday, Chair, Reivenbark, Commissioner Zapples and I, to go and attend the, the Amazon Prime meeting with the, the runarounds that were filmed in Wilmington. It was New Hanover High School, but they called it Wilmington High School, but I don't care about that, because they filmed it in our, in, in New Hanover High, which is obviously my high school, and I highly recommend folks to support our film industry, especially to turn, tune into Amazon Prime and watch the runarounds. You will be so surprised and amazed at how much of Wilmington that you will see, is a very proud thing to watch, and it did bring a couple tears to my eyes, because it reminded me what, how much fun I had in high school. So I recommend it. Our film industry is, is an awesome, I mean, I've got memories going back to the eighties on film here, so we have a deep history of film, and this one was the first one, I believe, was named Wilmington, so I encourage everyone to go watch that. Thank you.
It's available on streaming on Amazon, Amazon Prime.
Yes.
It is wonderful.
Meeting's over.